Moved by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armin?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Sting.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
A motion to approve the March 21st, 2015 budget workshop. No minutes due, lack of quorum.
Yeah, there's no minutes.
Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Item Three, Correspondence, Citizen Statements. Item Four, Unfinished Business, having none. Item Five, New Business. Item A, Twenty-Four, Firelight Place, Norfolk Ice Pavilion LLC Sanitary Sewers. Good evening, Kurt.
Good evening. Before you is a request from the Norfolk Ice Pavilion to connect a proposed addition at the facility into the sanitary sewers. Norfolk Ice Pavilion basically consists of two existing ice skating rinks with a snack bar and basically a pro shop onsite at the facility. That was approved back in about 1998 to connect it to sanitary sewers when they constructed it. And that ultimately discharges into the line that goes into the North Haven sanitary sewer system. What you have before you is the request, they're proposing an addition, they're proposing to add one additional ring to the facility, the norly portion of the existing facility, and they'd like to tie that as part of the whole complex into the sanitary sewer system. There's a couple of things to know regarding that. One is, any new connection is required to pay a special connection fee based upon square footage and use of the facility. In this case, basically equates down to, based upon our current sewer connection fees, requirement of a special connection fee of $30,000 for a 28,000 square foot addition. The other thing to note on that, and it's on the plan, including the packet, there's a little green and yellow. What they're required to do, the green is a proposed addition, they will need to relocate a portion of sanitary sewer that they constructed back in 1998 when the original development was done. Basically relocate it away from the proposed addition and then extend it to the norly property line of the Norfolk Ice Pavilion property. They granted a sanitary sewer easement to the town through their property when they installed the original sanitary sewer in 1998 to facilitate the potential future development of about 30 acres of industrial property to the north of the Ice Pavilion. And it couldn't go on a proposed road. The reason why it's located on their property is because of grade differentials, to keep proper cover on the sanitary sewer line. So it was worked out and extended through their property. And again, with the proposed new addition, they have to relocate a part of that line and then extend it to the norly property line. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. The applicant engineer, and I believe the applicant or in the audience if there's any particular questions. It's something, they're actually anxious to get going on. Just to give you an overall of the process, they're here before WPCA, they were at PNC last Thursday, and they're hoping to be on the next, they're planning on being on the next Thursday's PNC meeting and hoping for approval to get that project underway. Again, there's a suggested motion, and basically the two most important things to know are item number two, that they are required to pay a $30,000 special connection fee based upon the square footage and the proposed use, and that the sewer easement shall be revised as shown on the plan, basically meeting the approval of the town attorney, and then they have to enter into the agreement with the town and file that in land records, which is a standard condition of approval. So, again, there's a suggested motion before you. Any questions? I'm here, and applicant engineer is here as well.
Do you have just any problems with PNC?
No, a couple of things. There were some concerns about parking and some of the peak times, and there was a meeting with the police chief, and they're actually proposing to stagger some of the way they scheduled the facilities to make things operate better. They're providing additional parking to meet the town's parking requirements under the zoning regulations. So, and there was a little thing with trash, but I think they've, actually it was a good time because it comes forward, and they're revamping some of what they do there and their operations to address all that.
Yeah, if I could, there was also a resident who, on that issue of trash, had asked at length this afternoon, submitted something for the council's consideration. There are photos here if your council members are interested, but in referring with Kurt, this issue has been addressed and is most appropriately addressed at PNC level for trash. But I do have those photos here if there are any council members wishing to look at that. And I know that they're addressing that issue.
So again, there is a suggested motion for your consideration, including the packet.
Kurt, this is another ring. Is this just the practice ring, or is this for games that they're doing now?
I think both. I can't speak to that directly. It's a lot of, from what I understand, it's a scheduling issue. To be able to spread things out. But my belief is both.
Right. Make it difficult, we got about enough rep.
Property they already own.
Where's the motion?
They own the property, they own their owns, one of the owners owns the property to the north as well, the vacant industrial property. And what they are doing as part of this, I might add, they're revising the property line to accommodate the proposed addition, and make sure they meet all the set backs and lot coverage criteria as well. There's a road, most of you are probably familiar with it. That road going to the facility is not, they originally built it with the intent of making it a town road. They still own it, it's their access road to it. They'll revise that as part of this proposed addition and expansion. And maybe, their intent is someday, where down the road, that there would be a road stop going into the industrial property with multiple lots or multiple buildings on it north.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
Thank you, Kurt.
I would like to make a motion to accept this motion for the new ice rink as it's written.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilor Caprio, seconded by Councilor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armin?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item Six, Citizen Statements and Petitions. Regular Town Council Meeting. Item Seven, Reports of Committees, Boards, and Commissions. Item A, Park and Recreation.
The Park and Recreation Commission met last night, and there was much discussion about the youth football field. The North Bramford Youth Football, along with some commission members, the town manager, Fran Marola, and myself, met several weeks ago for a possible solution as to how we can fix some of the areas that were concerns over the last few years. In the folder at the desk for all of us, there's a photo of the existing field, and I know it's a little hard to see because it's quite dark, but what Fran has proposed is, where you see where the clay pile is behind the police department, there's a ridge there, and what he is proposing to do is to cut that bridge down, and they're going to move their concession stand over to that side of the field. The field is going to get laid out, just moved a little bit differently, so that they can have, move the spectator stands, he's going to put in some crushed stone so that they can put down a temporary concession stand over there, and he's also going to make a handicap seating area, because that was one of their big issues, that they had no handicap seating. So the estimated cost for that project is about $7,500. And the Park and Rec Commission voted last night to use some of the $25,000 that we appropriated last year during budget season, that's in the current CIP for Park and Rec, to make these changes. And youth football has also said that they will donate in-kind services wherever they can, as far as licensed electricians, plumbers. Franny is on board with that, said that that is fine. He is willing to work with them in regards to that. They do understand that this is a temporary fix until we have a master plan laid out, but it is one that they can certainly live with, and it will help us get through the process of laying out the master plan. The Phase Two part of this is to move their practice field. And their practice field currently is at Memorial Field, right here at MBIS, and that is a project that would be ready for next year. And Fran's proposal for that is to move it to the Swiatek property. If you're on 22, looking at Wall Field, to the left of Wall Field, where Franny has already done some clearing, he is proposing to basically put in a practice field, and it's basically just grass area. He would grade it so that it would drain properly and plant seed. It is not, there will be no irrigation, there will be no lights on the field. But it's an area that they would be able to practice, and they would be able to get off of this field here, because there is much needed work here. And that is, basically can be done with in-kind services through the public works department also. But both of those could not be done for this year, the practice field is for next year.
A part of that, can we improve access to that field from our gravel paved parking lot?
Yes, well, what football is looking to do is to basically have the entrance, like, to use Wall Field.
On that side?
On that side. And still, if they have overflow for their big games or whatever, they can still park over by the softball field in the, not on the roadway, but in the parking lot that they have. But there's plenty of parking there that they use for the potato fest, and even if there's ball wall and Wall Field is being used, they will work that out with the Little League Department. So at this time, I just would like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add item 13C. In our packet, there is a memo from Park and Rec regarding the allocations, there are $25,000 for appropriation for that. So I'd like to add, item C, appropriation of funds for the Recreation Department. And Chairman Lynch is here and will report on that later.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armin?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Is that it, Rose?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Item Eight, Town Manager's Report.
I don't have anything to say other than a handout on the, one of those matters concerning the gas companies proposals. Nothing that I want to present, but they had submitted extra documents, I just want to pass that out. That's all I have.
I think we all received a letter from Mr. Jim Dwyer. I don't know if he wanted that, Mike, did he want that read right into the record?
We just got to you, Mayor. We wanted it, put it in the packet, your discretion.
Attention Town Council Members. Topic, Code of Conduct. All of you have volunteered to do this tedious task for your community. I would like to commend you all for your dedication to your community. In a recent Town Council Meeting, you set up a code of conduct policy, which is beneficial at your meetings. It will help smooth out or calm down emotions during your meetings. Recently, after watching the Town Council Meeting on TV for March 17th, I would like to make a comment towards Mr. Cliff Potter and Mr. John Lindofy for their courteous statements regarding your code of conduct policy. Can I make a suggestion to the Town Council Members, that any citizen that wishes to make a citizen statement, put it in writing ahead of time and present it to the Town Manager for the Town Council Meetings? At least, all of you can make a comment on it during your meetings. It would help save frustration as well as aggravation at these meetings. Please advise all interested Norfolk Bramford citizens to write a correspondence letter to you. Item Ten, Citizen Statements, Petitions, Correspondence. We have an invitation, a letter to opening day ceremony for Little League, 2015. To the Council, 2015 Norfolk Bramford Little League Season will be holding its opening day ceremony on Saturday, April 18th, at 9:00 a.m. at Wall Field at Swiatek Park. As you may know, our program was incorporated in 1955 and serves more than 400 children in our community. We try to honor the sports in baseball and softball by instilling the sound fundamentals of the game to every player we have. Our dedicated coaches and managers give tirelessly of themselves in the spirit of giving back and for the sake and for the sum, also paying it forward. We have many fun events for the children and parents to participate in and at the field as we celebrate the start of 2015 baseball and softball season. Being a notable representative of our community, the League's Board of Directors would be honored to have you attend a special event to celebrate with our town's parents and children. The players, their coaches, parade into Wall Field at Swiatek Park from the area of north, the third baseline near the town garage area around 9:00 a.m., where the opening day festivities will begin near home plate. If you'd be available to attend, please contact me via email or phone. I look forward to hearing from you. If you would like to say a few words at opening day, please convey this to me and we'll contact if you're available. I look forward to hearing from all of you. So, this is from the President of the League, Mr. Brent Aiken. Item Eleven, Resignations and Appointments. Item A, Appointment. Virginia Fallon to the Library Board, term to expire 12/31/15.
Mr. A, I make a motion to appoint Virginia H. Fallon to the Library Board, her term to expire 12/31/15.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armin?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item B, Appointment. Stephanie Thaler as Clerk to the Town Council.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Stephanie Thaler as the Clerk to the Town Council.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Fuji. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armin?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Welcome. Item Twelve, Unfinished Business, Discussion and Action. Item A, Updates of the Defined Benefit Plan. I believe this is being tabled. Item B, Update Status of 12 Bittersweet Drive.
Bittersweet Drive?
Yeah.
Yeah, this was an item that I believe was asked and requested, we looked at in previous meeting, and nine members of the parties and their attorney, and there's a memo in your packet in terms of the write-up and the sort of synopsis of that meeting and what transpired. Essentially comes down to that they, we're still looking at whether or not the council is going to agree to move a swap, and the cost at this point, the town has borne the cost of a survey of $1,500, and what would remain would be the associated attorney's fees in terms of the package, also the map revision cost of approximately $715. The implication we have from the other party is that they're not willing or feel that they should pay for that, and that's where we're at at this point. We can talk about, there is a map there, and they are looking at an alternative to swap to incorporate that little appendage that they had for their vehicle, or cabin, their cruiser, motor vehicle home, and that's where we're at at this point. We have not yet had the chance to talk with the Land Trust, they thought we'd come back here first to see whether or not council wants to push the issue of cutting or splitting that cost. In fact, I think they, I think they'd be ahead of the game of picking up the $750, which I thought was reasonable, given the fact that the town spent $1,500 already. The answer coming back was no. So, I'm not sure what direction we should take it from here.
I don't understand why the responsibility should be on the town, you know, to cover all these costs when they're encroaching upon town property, is that right? I mean, perhaps we should pay for the survey. But if, you know, if they're encroaching on town property wise, the responsibility on the town to pay for those expenses?
My thought is, at some point, this property was like this for a long time, and it, real estate had changed hands, and there must have been a title search done, so probably somebody missed this. Shouldn't that go on somebody's?
Good luck getting that rehearsed to the attorney.
Blame the lawyers. Yeah, but I mean, they're too responsible for that.
Yeah.
But here's where I'm coming from. I don't think that, you know, I think, Kurt, correct me if I'm wrong, is that a 15-foot side yard up there?
Yes.
Okay. So, to me, you don't just go park a motorhome on town land and get a 50-foot piece of land because, because you got a house that's built on the town's land already. You know, you can't, you know, I will never support giving somebody a motorhome place that's 50 feet onto the town land. So, so for you, Michael, you know, if they don't want to pay for the survey, you know, the town has to do it, it needs to act, we need to act, and we're not going to give them the land for putting a motorhome on. You know, give them 15 feet from the property that they have, and they should say, because our other option is to just get a court order and tell them to take their house down, get it off the town property. I don't know where the rest of you are on that, but that's where I'm going to be, that's where I am today, and that's where I'll be whenever we vote on it.
I mean, but is our point, is all the councils ultimately is, I think not to keep and maintain this, but to talk to the Land Trust to add it to their土地 property, right? I mean, to absorb for them, see if they're interested to absorb our parts, right?
Well, we're going to have to take land from the Land Trust to give to them, correct? Or is it just the town's land?
No, I think maybe Kurt could address this, but I think it's just a swap using their land and our land, yeah.
Right, so, we give them 15 feet, or whatever we need to make it legal. Give them a legal lot. Otherwise, everybody's going to start parking their vehicles on town land and say, hey, give me a piece of land, too.
Yeah. I said, like Mike said, we haven't talked, haven't talked, shared this all with the Land Trust. And I thought the intent was ultimately the town was interested in conveying it to the Land Trust once things are resolved. I mean, if that's the intent, then I would solicit some of their input on it as well, in terms of configuration, because it does, some of these things make it a much more odd-shaped lot, and is it what the Land Trust wants or not? And then again, so that's, shape is one thing, I mean, the concept was, you don't get it, you have to get something to get it. It's just a reconfiguration of the lot to make it work so that, I mean, the original one I did when I laid it out, it was like trying to match what was there. I don't know how long it's been there, but it's obviously been there for a while. The current owner, I don't think, created that situation. That other bump out that they just brought up, that was a new one on, that was something that requested.
Who parked the motorhome in that?
I believe, I believe I'm not, I may not, I may be wrong, but I believe it was the current property owner that has a motorhome that they parked out there.
So that problem is a recent appendage?
I believe so.
And there's no proposed quit-pro-quo in terms of a land swap for that small piece of property that they want to park the trailer on?
I would certainly recommend, you know, that was the concept all along. It's an even swap if it's done. That was something that just came up in our last meeting that wasn't anticipated, but we just threw it out there in terms of, this is what they were asking for. Doesn't mean, anyone can ask for anything, but doesn't mean we're always going to get it. I have not shared it with the Land Trust, because it may have an impact, again, if that's the intent to convey it to them ultimately, it may not work for their, what they want.
How long has this actually been going on? For like 30 years?
I, I can't tell you. I didn't do a historical search on it. That, I couldn't find, when I looked in the building records, I couldn't find the permit for the addition. Doesn't mean there wasn't one, I'm just telling you, I couldn't find one on file. So that's the best I can do.
But you're saying the motorhome came with the new, with the new landowner? So that's only two years old.
So, I mean, I think that, I think they parked it over there. Because he seems to have a motorhome, he said, I park it over there, so I'm associating that with...
So does the 40 feet that it goes out, does that give them the 15-foot side lot?
Oh, it gives them more.
I mean, just so that it's in compliance, that's...
Yeah, I mean, this does more. What I did, there was a fence there, the chain link fence around there, and a yard area that obviously had been there for a while, and I just squared it off and made that rectangular fit over there because the chain link fence was there. And I, that's, again, when I, and I have the equivalent areas in A and B for that, more or less. I said that last bump out, the, for the motorhome, that was something that just came up in the last meeting we had with the property owner.
Can't you park the motorhome the other way, going on the park?
Well, you could park it somewhere else in the lot.
You could park it down behind the house.
Kurt, lot number 12, does that belong to the Land Trust now, it's a tower formerly that's out in Norfolk?
Yeah, no, that's a town's property.
So why would we be approaching the Land Trust to take just a slipper of...
Well, during this whole discussion, when it came off, you know, there was talk about putting a tower there, and I think that's where it all came up. The question came up, should the town property, is the town convey it to the Land Trust?
All of it?
All of it. That parcel, because it's just, it's open space.
All right, so we need the input of the Land Trust as to, are they interested in being with the... B, would they prefer alternative A or alternative B?
Yes. And all sort of, I'm going to just throw another one. I did talk to the Health District preliminarily, and they reckon, they were more in favor of the alternative B approach, only because the septic system is, is closer to the house. And by doing something away from the house, it gives them more flexibility with any requirements for that septic system.
The current septic or...
The current. I believe there were some tests done somewhere in the last six or eight years, according to what I heard from the Shore.
I would make that, Josh.
But again, we wanted to bring it back to the council. Feedback, is the intent to go to the land trust? If the intent is to go to the land trust, we should probably get their input in terms of what works for them as well.
I would think it would make more sense, we're going with the option that East Shore agrees with, in case they need the room to extend, is it extend the existing septic system or for a...
Well, that, yeah, that would be more, because the, from what I understand, you know, certainly the septic system is closer to the house on that side, on the south side somewhat.
The thing that kind of irks me a little bit is that they're not even willing to negotiate anything with us as far as the cost. So right there, that, that tells me they're really not negotiating in good faith. And, you know, we might have to look into other options to fix this problem. I mean, if they want to, you know, $750 is not an unreasonable deal to make everything legal. Excuse me. And I don't think it's unfair at all, since we did absolutely nothing wrong here.
Apparently, the, if you see on there, there's another, they have another problem with their neighbor to the west. The neighbor to the west has an encroachment on their property. Apparently, the bunch of these lots on this cul-de-sac have issues in terms of what's actually where, because there's definitely an encroachment from their, from the neighbor on their property. That, that's their problem.
No, does this all happen when the builder built this whole development? Or this happened over the years? Or you don't know?
I, I don't know. I can't give you the history on the whole thing. But that's what they found when the survey was done, that there were other issues in the area.
Two houses have land that they're not supposed to use.
There were other issues. Other houses had other issues.
How many houses?
I can't tell you. The surveyor did this, this lot, and they saw, and that's where they found the encroachment from the other lot, onto that. That's the only lot they surveyed. Whatever direction, we're certainly happy to proceed from there. We're just bringing back the results of that meeting with...
Well, Michael, who'd they negotiate with? You or John? Or who'd they negotiate with? Was there any negotiation, or they just said, we're not paying, and that's it?
It wasn't really, we sat down to discuss the issues and, you know, didn't really commit to anything, other than talking about what we could possibly explore and what the cost would be. And they, what I interpreted from the council on the first go-round was splitting the cost. So, you know, I think there's probably a round two in there, and certainly bring John in and...
Yeah, you guys should get, get a little more negotiating, so we have a little more solid deal of what's going on, because we're not going to, we're not going to do this if they don't come, come up with part of this anyway. It's just not fair.
It's not easy to hear down here in the far end of the table, but assuming that what Vinnie is saying is that we ought to just resolve this without further costs to the town, and I think that's what I heard him say.
Pretty much.
It seems to me there's, there's like two or three issues here. One, are we prepared to cooperate with the landowner to try to remedy this situation? And I think we are. Two, who's responsible for the cost? I don't think it should be the town's cost, irrespective of what the source of this problem is. It certainly wasn't the town. And third, that appendage that the trailers parked, the hundred, that's mobile. Move it. Put it on your land, not on the town land. That's what I think is an appropriate resolution in this matter. Obviously, there's nine minions here. And lastly, I think we need to go to the land trust and find out if they have interest in these property, and convey it off to the land trust if they do.
Makes sense to me.
Makes a lot...
That's a lot less complicated than this whole deal, and if they're basically refused...
Send that to the land trust, and then come back, and we can vote on it.
Okay. Yeah, that, I think that's... And I'm not in favor of using up John's time for any further meetings or sessions or whatever. This is what it is. We're willing to work with them. Their responsibility. Take it and rectify it. We don't need to meet. Okay, thank you.
God, thank you, Kirk. Thank you, Joe. All right. Item C, Update on Balance, MBIS Bond Funds.
This actually kind of segues into the next few items on the agenda. We're going to tackle them all in one shot. The first one starts out with the balance of the MBIS funds. And again, going back to April of 2014, it was roughly $5.3 million of funds that were available. And to refresh everybody's memory, what happened was, there was a, our legislature's passed a change to the school funding formula that allowed us to get a greater percentage of school construction grant for this school than we originally anticipated, thus freeing up money that we had bonded before that change was enacted. So throughout the years, we've taken that $5.3 million and identified certain pieces. We did $819 for the high school roof. We've allocated roughly $1,032 for the TVES roof, $70,000 for a roof at the Public Works main garage, $370,000 for narrow-banning radio projects, $550,000 for the Public Works standard building, and roughly $1,075 for a series of projects that were identified in the 1415 plan, which I have attached there for you. Considering all those, it leaves you roughly $1,455 going into the current year. And I also attached on one of these sheets, the, where we were at this point in time was roughly about $1,001. Out of that, $1,004, we've identified projects that, at this point, are in there. They're certainly subject to your opinion and to action to modify those. What I would caution you is that that still does not take into account the $117,000 or $12,000 that the state is looking for refunding that money, which I'm working with the girl from the state, and I still feel that that's going to go away. In fact, we may get more money back, quite honestly, negotiating with the state on that issue. Also, the $1,032 was the TVES roof initial amount, when it was solely a flat roof. And I think we all kind of anticipate that when the bids come back in for the pitch roof, it'll be greater than the original estimate based on the new design. So I would be cautious to go down to dollar one on that pot of money until we get some more information back on the TVES roof project. So that's where we are on the, on the TVES, on the MBIS balance of the funds. Now, I want to segue into my other memo about bonding. And there was talk about, in the last couple of council meetings, regarding some bonding, getting an appetite to go back into the market to capture some of the low interest rates and to pick up some projects. And there was some, some talk, if you will, of borrowing a larger pot of money to put it aside, and as the projects come up, to work off that pot of money. You can't do that. Okay? There's, IRS has arbitrage rules, two basic rules. They have a 36-month spend down. You have to spend 85% of the proceeds in 36 months after you bond the money. And the second arbitrage rule is you can't take that money that you borrow at a tax-exempt low rate and invest it and earn a greater interest. That situation had occurred in town. In the '97 bond issue, we actually had a $30,000 arbitrage penalty we paid in 2003, because we did invest it. The market was obviously different in 2003 than it is today. So the arbitrage piece about earning interest is not a factor in today's world, but the spend-down criteria we do have to live with. So you can't borrow more than you think you can reasonably spend in 36 months. So that being said, I understand the rationale why someone would want to borrow a larger amount. That way you can kind of, the council may change. So while this, this board may want to do a lot of road program or other, other projects, the next group of people may say, forget about it. So if you have this grandiose plan of doing, you know, $10 million of road projects, you only get the first $3 million, and then you get nothing else, what have you accomplished? You really haven't accomplished much. It kind of goes back to Marie's comments from the prior meeting. We need a plan. We need a capital plan that's a long-term plan that everybody can buy into. We say, okay, we're going to bond, pick a number, $4 million this year. And we're going to identify road, X, Y, and Z. Three years from now, we're going to bond another $4 million. And we're going to bond roads H, J, and K. All right? So as long as everybody buys into that plan, you can borrow the money in manageable chunks that won't violate the arbitrage rules. So that's what we got to remember, that when you, when you think about what projects you want to bond, how much can you accomplish in a 36-month period? Whether it's roads, whether it's buildings, whether it's, whatever happens to be the project that you want to fund. In talking with Mark Chapman, our financial advisor, once, once you guys have created a list of projects you want to fund and the corresponding dollar amounts, we could run some various scenarios. Maybe it makes sense to do a one-year ban, while the interest rates are about maybe a half a percent on a one-year ban. Or maybe we should bond it. Bonding right now is about 2.75 to 3% on a 20-year bond, which is really cheap. But again, it's up to, the first step is for you guys to identify X amount of projects. How much do you want us to look at bonding? We'll run various scenarios and make it all work into our debt schedule. Remember that 1718 is the year when our debt service tapers off. We can, we can structure this in a way so it doesn't really impact, hit our budget until 1718. So it kind of minimizes things and rides out where we have a nice lull in our debt service. So that's what I would suggest that you folks, you know, as far as the bonding piece goes, identify the projects you want to do, and then prepare a list, and I can have scenarios run to see where we're going with that. The last item I want to talk about is, Mr. Marola would like about $100,000 of road shimming money. The current roads, as you know, in town this year was a very harsh, harsh year for the winter roads. And the question is, where do you get $100,000? Well, going back to the MBIS pot of money, you could certainly identify, one of the expenditures you want to spend is that $100,000 of MBIS money, that theoretically won't become available till July 1st, because when your 14, 16 CIP kicks in July 1st. We can internally fund that, take it out of our own cash pocket for now theoretically, and then reimburse it with that money come July 1st. So that gives you a short-term answer that Fran needs to address these roads before they get to the point where they're not worth saving. And $100,000 is a number that he and Kirk had come up with as just the, the first pass of looking at the problem. So the bonding, again, identify projects you want us to bond. We'll create a list. We'll put some dollars on it, run some scenarios, make sure it all works for our debt service schedule. $100,000 of road shimming money, I would suggest, when it comes to the capital night, two nights from now, we alter that column of those projects that were identified projects of MBIS money and include that. That may mean something else has to get pushed out. That's just the fact of life. So when that night comes up, I would encourage you to take that $100,000 he needs out of the MBIS pot of money for July 1st. Again, we'll internally fund it out of our own cash pocket for the time being, and then reimburse it with that money come July 1st.
That was all.
And the last piece regarding roofs was the high school roof. I had a scenario, a listing of the expenditures on the high school roof project. The project came in at roughly $1.8 million. This is 12 D on your agenda, of which there were $37,000 of ineligible costs. So the net was about $1,780 of grant-eligible costs. At a 56.07 reimbursement rate, we're due to receive $998,000 back from the state. So our local cost is about $819,000 for the high school roof project. That came in under budget, and as far as I know, everybody's pretty happy with the work. It seems to be not leaking. So that kind of flows back to the first memo where the $819 came from. Any questions on the bonding at all, or the roofs, or CIP, or...
So the unit ventilators that we replaced on the high school roof project, I don't see them any, or are they some of the check dates? We bought those?
Right.
And then installed them ourselves, because that saved a considerable amount of money.
You're correct.
And just wondering, I thought it was going to come out of this fund.
Yeah, I believe you're right. That's a good question. I'm not sure.
So I don't know on some of these payments, or those are all to Allied, so the 1.7, 78.
Heyberg was obviously the architect, and Seal and Ophelia did some work preliminarily on the specs before they went out to bid.
So I take it the architect is part of, is a covered an eligible cost from the state?
Yes.
Okay.
Certain parts of the Allied bill, I don't remember exactly what they were, were ineligible. But I will, I will check on the roof ventilators. I think that was bought through Granger, if I recall.
Correct. Because that's the same, we want to do the same thing for TVES, which has considerably less unit ventilators.
Correct.
But since we're redoing the roof, they should be replaced at the same time.
Makes perfect sense. I'll check them out.
And I, I think the final cost on those were somewhere between $35,000 and $40,000.
Any other questions on bonding?
No, it sounds like we need to schedule more than anything, right?
Well, we need to figure out how much, reasonably in 36 months, how much can you expend? I mean, we've identified, Fran's talked about the drainage issue up in Skylark, the Burnland area of town, as being a major project, multiple million dollars. Some other roads in town need to be addressed. This $100,000 of shimming, we'll identify some of the roads that are not as severely destroyed, but are salvageable at least with some help with Public Works. So that would be, the first step would be identify what, what you want to bond, what type of projects, how much you want to go out for. Then we can work some scenarios together and come up with some numbers.
Thank you, Anthony. All right. Item D and E, we covered on the MBHS roof and the TVES roof project. Item 13, New Business Discussion in Action. Item A, Public Works Request for Summer Help.
There is one gentleman in Public Works who's currently out on a workers' compensation situation, and another person potentially is retiring. That leaves the Public Works Department at a time when the grass will be growing pretty heavily, very short-staffed. And Fran has proposed to hire a couple of part-time seasonal employees to be able to maintain the workload that he has. With the savings that we're going to have, because workers' comp reimburses us a portion of that person's salary, and obviously the wage differential is significant, it should be budget-neutral for us in this current fiscal year. The savings that we'll get from the gentleman being on workers' comp will be enough to cover the two part-time salaries. Similarly, in the new year, these two part-time people, Fran's going through and revising job descriptions and so on. So it's not going to be an immediate hire for the potentially two retirements that we're going to have. So the savings that we'll have in the full-time line, again, will more than offset the cost to hire these two folks, both in the current year and in the next fiscal year as well. So I would propose that you, again, it comes before you folks, because the hiring ban is in place, and in order to hire the people, it has to be blessed by the council.
Thank you.
Given that, that's what I say.
Questions?
You've got enough on us, Aaron. You need all the help you can get.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Bramford Town Council authorizes the lifting of the hiring ban to allow Michael T. Paulis, Town Manager, to hire two seasonal workers, one starting in the 1415 fiscal year, to assist the Public Works Department to meet the needs of the department caused by the pending retirements of Public Works personnel. The Town Council further authorizes the Treasurer-Finance Director to transfer the necessary funds to cover this expense in the 1415 fiscal year from the workers' compensation reimbursements received for a Public Works employee who is out injured.
Second.
Before we vote, just a clarification. It's a lift in the ban just for these two hires? Okay.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, and I believe with the second by Counselor Rose. Roll call?
Mayor King Delora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Westworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Quannin?
Yes.
Counselor Pucci?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item B, Review of Self-Insurance Risk Corridor.
This kind of ducktails right into our budget discussion. Just wanted to give you some details as to where the number you see in... Just wanted to give you some details as to where the number you see in the budget for our percentage of the risk corridor came from. Initially, we looked at a number of $892,000 as the risk corridor, which is potentially the shortfall if all the claims come to be, and so on. So the decision the council needs to make on this regard is how much, and that number was revised, as you see on the back sheet, the latest numbers we got from Dave Matthew, to $940,874. So the question becomes, how much of that $940,000 do you want to fund? How much do you want to risk? How much do you want to fund? When we created the budget, we went in at a 33%. We used the contract count from February 1st, 2015, where the town had 74 contracts. The board had 233. So the town's about 24% of the overall health insurance gain, and Board of Ed's about 76%. At the time, we were using 892, using 33% of that, and then taking it times the 24%, that's our piece of that. So you'll see $70,953 is built into our budget for our piece of the risk corridor as it went to print. Certainly, that's the floor, that's the lowest you want to go. The other thing interesting to note is that if we had stayed fully insured, we're looking at a roughly 22% increase in our Anthem premiums to 24.4. And if we choose 100% of the risk corridor, we're at 20.96. So 100% of the risk corridor means you could sleep pretty easily at night, no risk, minimal risk, I should say, is always going to be a risk, but you've covered most of your potential downside, and you'd be just about in the same neighborhood, you still have a 5% savings just about of where you would be if you stayed yourself fully insured. So I just wanted to give you a background as to where the number you see in the budget, where that came from. Again, that has to change because the 892 is really now $940,000. And then how much do you folks want to budget in the current year?
So they're recommending that we fund at least a third of that million?
That was the bare minimum.
Bare minimum.
Bare minimum.
What do they recommend? Two-thirds, or?
It's your discretion. It's budgetary impact. You can go half, because you go 100%. How much risk do you want to hold? That's what boils down to. You're trading dollars for risk.
Right.
So the more dollars you put forward, the less risk you're going to have.
Is this risk corridor entered into a consultation of employee contribution towards medical insurance?
Negative. The employee's contribution is based on what's called the allocation rate. Those are rates that are given to us by Anthem, and they have the single, two-person, and family rates. It's allocation rate when you're in a self-insured plan. That's the rate that we use for the employee premium share. And that's what we use for COBRA as well, and if it goes on a COBRA, that's the base rate we use for those types of situations.
Would the allocated rates, in theory, be less than current premium?
Would they be less? Yes, they'll be slightly less than current, yes. They'll be slightly less. Not a ton, quite honestly, but they will be less.
Where will that money, where will the risk corridor money, where does that stay?
What we're going to do is create a new fund on the town side. Similarly, when we did OPEB, we created a 511 fund for our OPEB contributions, and the Board of Ed and town both contribute into that fund, and the expenses come out of that fund. Similarly, that would happen with the self-insurance reserve. The Board of Ed and town would contribute money into this new fund, and the premiums we paid out of the fund, and the claims out of the fund as well.
So this risk corridor, so say we did 2/3 of it, or whatever number we did.
Okay.
And we're really lucky. We didn't spend any of it. So that 2/3 we have next year.
Stays in that fund.
And so next year, we would do the last third. What's the number? Do you want to be like at 150%? Or, I mean, where is that risk corridor account supposed to be?
I think if you're, 100% is where your target is. If you go above 100%, you have potentially a cushion. Some people will take a premium holiday and not put money in. It's kind of dangerous. You don't want to, you always want to make sure you keep a cushion there because obviously it's medical, it's health, people, health can change on a dime.
Right.
And your expenses could be greatly impacted by that.
So where do we, so how do we encumber this account so nobody can get at it?
Well, my goal is, once we get through the budget process, I'm going to bring before you the language to create a fund that's going to be solely for the purpose of medical insurance, not to be rated for any other purpose.
And this risk corridor account, Board of Ed and Town Council, is one account?
Correct. The health insurance is all pooled together.
Now, the thing is, you probably need to word that so future councils cannot change that also.
Correct.
Okay?
Correct.
Because this has to stay money for that insurance, and that's it.
You're correct.
Okay. I honestly think we should do, even if we do 70% of it, we're still saving money over the premiums, right? We're saving about 30% under the premium.
I don't think it's quite that drastic, but we're saving some money.
Right. And we're going to be pretty safe at 70% the first year. I'd rather not get caught with our pants down.
Correct.
And have to go looking for money to put money into this. We should just do it right from the beginning and move it forward. And I feel 70% is what I would feel would be a reasonable number.
Well, what will have to happen is, once the council makes a decision, then we'll factor that number into the budget on the town side, and then lay that to the Board of Ed, and they can factor that number into their, you know.
Right, because we're still saving money over the premiums. That would be for regular insurance.
Correct.
You said it would be 22% if we went with the insurance as it is, and it would be 20% if we go self-insured, if we funded it 100%, right?
Right. It'd be 21.84 if we stayed fully insured, was our Anthem rate increase. And if we funded 100% of the risk corridor, it's 20.9. So about 1% less. We'd still be saving 1% less than we were if we stayed fully insured, and we could sleep easily at night.
Even if we did 70, if we did agree at 70, we'd probably be a couple of percentage points even lower than that.
Correct. At 2/3, it's 15%.
There you go. That's pretty close, yeah.
About 66%. So, right. Exactly.
So if you did, if you did the 2/3, you're...
You're still saying about 6%.
Right, over...
Well, that's pretty good.
That's very good.
6% is about $5 million.
Right. Something. It's not what we need, but it's something.
So again, once the decision's made, if you want to make it tonight...
So when do we make that decision?
Can we make it tonight?
You can make it tonight. I can factor the numbers in for your discussion tomorrow night.
I'll make a motion that we go forward with the self-insurance and fund the risk corridor at 66%.
What was that for some time?
66, 2/3.
Moved by Council Rose, seconded by Council Caprio. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Westwood?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armin?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Pucci?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item C, Park and Rec, appropriation of funds for the park and recreation.
Thank you. I'm Brian Lynch, Commissioner of Park and Rec. After a lengthy discussion last night regarding the $25,000 that you had allocated in this year's budget, Councilwoman Rosé Angeloni had given you a recap on the football modifications. We had also recommended that $10,000 of that $25 be used for repairing and replacing park and rec equipment up at the Northford Park, as well at North Farms Park, I apologize. Some of the concrete bases are protruding out of it. The remaining $7,500 in that, we've recommended to be used as seed money to put in a playscape at our Stanley T. Williams Park and Rec Senior Center. Obviously, it won't cover the cost of it, but it'll get us started in the direction of building a playscape so that our summer youth program will have a place to play. We're looking to hopefully use some of the money in our 226 account to supplement that. Proposals are being drawn up as we speak now. And that was the recommendation of the council last night after much discussion. Commissioner, sorry about that. Any questions? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the spending of the appropriated funds for the Recreation Department, the $25,000 as presented.
Second.
If I could, I'd like to, just, I think there's an accounting issue we have to address first on the $25,000, whether or not some of that, those funds have been expended or not.
How could they be expended if they didn't come before the council? And what, do you know what kind of things they would have been expended on already?
To Anthony or for Pam, but I thought that there was an expenditure in terms of some of fitness.
Correct.
I was going to say, rather, if you could hold on until I verify the numbers. I believe a portion of some fitness equipment was purchased out of that money. There was some leftover money. Council appropriated, it was $15,000 in the 13, 14 budget for fitness equipment. Some of it was spent, I believe, about seven of it was spent last year. $8,000 was rolled this current year, at the end of last fiscal year. And there was, I believe, a $17,000 purchase of used fitness equipment, and we used the $8,000 from the remaining funds from last year, and nine, I believe, out of the $25 for the current year. So let me confirm that.
I'll rescind my second until he clarifies it.
I'll get it tomorrow night for you.
Okay. And then I guess I'll rescind the motion until we get clarification on this.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Brian.
Hi, good evening. My name's Eric Robey. I'm Commercial Industrial Sales Manager for Southern Connecticut Gas. Deputy Mayor Angelora, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to come here and address some of your questions and concerns that were raised in previous council meetings. So I'll try to keep this brief, I think, for the benefit of the community and the council itself. I should just give a quick background on the project. This is in reference to the Southern Connecticut Natural Gas Expansion Project into the Northford Center area. The project expands infrastructure more than 9,000 feet, and this is also referenced in the sheet that we handed out, the document sheet we handed out. It expands the infrastructure from our existing mains, more than 9,000 feet, into the Northford Center, up to the ACES school area. In addition to the ACES school, four other town buildings would be passed along the road, 28 commercial buildings, as well as about 25 residents. And they would all have, after this expansion, access to clean, affordable, reliable natural gas. This project was revisited actually several times, and most recently, January 21st. We've been working on this about three months. Previous to this latest version, the project was impeded by the actual cost or contribution native construction, which would be required by the town and/or the commercial office base to get this building to, or this project to proceed forward. With some of the new favorable rules from the Comprehensive Energy Strategy, and in accordance with those rules of the strategy, Southern Connecticut Gas has been able to allocate more than $160,000 for this project to effectively defray the cost, the contribution native construction for the project to move forward. So I give you that background, and with the support of both the Finance Director, the Business Manager, and the Facilities Group, we were able to investigate and address some of the questions and concerns that you had raised previously, and I'll go through those very quickly. The first one being timing of the project. So based on a favorable commitment, which we believe would be a, into the budget and then a referendum vote somewhere in the mid-May time range, we would have sufficient time to execute not only our service agreements, but also to run the more than 9,000 feet of new additional gas main and services to the, up to the ACES school. With that, we would do that before or in the summer months, and have that ready for the town for the 2015 heating season, which is important to us. One other subsequent question was raised regarding the actual, and I can't remember which council member raised a question, but how long the actual equipment in the building would take to convert. We went back to a past project, which was the high school project, which was the most recent and a fairly significant project that was converted to natural gas. And that project, we were told, was less than three weeks to convert that entire project. So from a timing perspective, we think we have that covered based on the council and the town voting somewhere in the mid-May time range. The second question that was brought up was the actual versus the projected savings. And again, this was in reference to the high school project, which was a substantial conversion project. Looking at that project, we had, and based on information provided from the town early on, we had projected that that building would save $106,000 on an annual basis. We looked at the actual savings, again, based on the information that was provided by the town, and the savings were $108,800. So right on target with that one. So that was the second bullet item that you had addressed in previous meetings. The next one was the current economics of the project. We did review the economics with the town manager to make sure that our assumptions were correct and accurate. It showed, and we provided this at the previous meeting, it showed a less-than-two-year payback, and we did a cash flow analysis over a 15-year period, which we thought was justifiable, which showed an over $800,000 cash flow over that period of time. And this did, one of the questions was, does this include the cost of conversion? Yes, it does include the cost of conversions, which were estimated by your contractors. So we did include that in the analysis. Which leads me to the last point, and next steps. We're trying to find out what we needed to do for next steps, and I think there's a lot of, some miscommunication around that. We are committed to move this project forward from Southern Connecticut Natural Gas and make this project a reality. We have earmarked these funds for the benefit of North Branford. However, the window of opportunity right now is quickly shrinking on us. These are 2014 funds, which have been earmarked for a project that must be done in 2015. If we cannot get a resolution in the mid-May time range, we are going to have to rescind that offer to use those funds. We will have to use those funds for other communities, neighboring communities. With that, we want to see this project move fast forward as quickly as possible. We'll help you to make those decisions as need be, and we thank you for your support. And just wanted to make sure we clarified those points publicly for you. Thank you.
Could I ask a question, please? Are you still looking for a $100,000 contribution from the town? I missed the last meeting, so I'm not sure if something has changed.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, we put that in the economic analysis. It's actually a, over a five-year period, the $100,000 contribution, which would be the contribution native construction, was spread out over a five-year period at $20,000.
Right. And your project encompasses running a line to Northford Center, including service our municipal buildings that are in Northford Center and the school buildings. You're also going up Old Post Road to the ACES school.
Correct.
Is it your, are you under the belief that we fund or are responsible for expenses for ACES school?
No, we didn't include that in our analysis.
Well, my question is, have you approached ACES school to contribute to this $100,000 since they're an entity that I think is funded by the state, but not by the town in North Branford?
We have not.
Why would we pick up an expenditure and fund it for the benefit of the ACES school building that is not a North Branford building?
We need, we need the additional load on those buildings to make the project viable. They would help to contribute. Those loads on the buildings would actually contribute.
Okay. Why wouldn't they contribute to this contribution you're looking for from the town?
I'll have to get back to you on that. I don't know the answer to that. I don't think that we included that into our analysis. It was strictly a benefit for the town and the residents and the commercial entities within the town.
The town, the time-sensitive funds that you have potentially allocated to this project, is that coming off the town's expenses? I mean, is that being offset by the town's expenses?
Could you repeat the question?
So you have 100, how much money, how much are the funds are in this time-sensitive block that you're talking about that we have to...
It's north of $160,000. I don't have the exact...
Is that going to offset the, so the potential expenses, $200,000 and some odd thousand dollars, and that money is offsetting the town's expense of 100?
It's actually, the total contribution native construction would be north of $200,000. So had we not had this, these available funds, the standard way we... So had we not had this, these available funds, the standard way we used to do business before the Comprehensive Energy Strategy, the town would be responsible for all those funds.
So three hundred thousand?
It would be, it's two hundred and, two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, something like that. So because we're able to use the non-firm margin funds that we described in the previous meetings, the non-firm margin funds are funds that typically would go back to the ratepayers in the form of a rebate. We're now able to access those funds to buy down projects which would historically be impeded by the, the capital cost, the contribution required. And that's why we revisited this project with those funds.
And that's the one hundred and sixty thousand dollar figure that's quoted in the memo?
That's from the, the gas company, that's Southern Connecticut Gas money, yes.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Oforio, eighteen, Laurel Lane. There's a couple of us out there, so I'll let you know I'm the nineteen sixty-six model. First, I want to start off on a personal level and thank the council for their work and volunteer and their time. Secondly, I'm here to represent North Branford Little League current situation. Right now, as it stands, we don't have enough playable fields. And this is not just due to a weather situation. It's, it's due to some deterioration in some of the fields. Colter Field, I mean, most of the time when you say Colter Field, everybody nods their head, and they already know what's coming. It's, it's in sad shape. And there are six teams, I mean, that's, it's an entire division that, I mean, we don't know when they're even going to get to practice. There's at least one coach now paying out of his own pocket to have Little League kids practice. I mean, he's renting fields on his own and looking to go, you know, he's going over to the Connecticut Sports Bucs and, and other places out of town. Our fields are maxed out. We've been to the Park and Rec Commission, and Fran's going to work his magic over on Wall Field and rectify some situations over there. We're, we're pleased with that. And other than that, I mean, I'm not here to bash, but it doesn't seem like we're on the radar. So I'm basically going to reiterate the same thing that football came here in the last couple of meetings and, and mentioned. At this time, I, I would like to urge the council, if there is any money put forth in the budget for fields, not to cut that money. And not only not to cut that money, but to help us with a direction. Like I said, not to bash, but either we're confused or it just seems like we're going in a circle. And also, you know, I did some walking around today in the rain, and, I mean, it's just my opinion. I don't think that Colter Field needs, the dollar amounts that I hear from people. I mean, I hear people say it needs two feet of crushed stone. I'm forty-nine years old, I played on Colter Field. I know it's not the best field out there, but we're not looking, I mean, we're not looking for an Astrodome. We're not looking, we're not looking for a stadium. We're, we're looking for a playable field. And, and on that note, please, I, I walked out today at some of the parks. And before you just vote for playscapes and everything else, please get your feet on the ground and go look at those playscapes. Okay? And if you're throwing them out, throw them in my backyard. Okay? Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, we don't have any more sign-ups for the actual council meeting. I do have a few names for the budget.
Okay.
I'm going to put that back.
Right now.
Close out the regular meeting.
We have an executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn from the regular town council meeting.
Second. Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Rhodes. Roll call. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Second. Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Coochie? Yes.
Councilor Rhodes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We're going to open the budget hearing for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. For Pollution Control Authority and Town Council Meeting of North Branford, Connecticut, Tuesday, April seventh, two thousand and fifteen, at the North Branford Intermediate School Cafeteria. It's approximately eight twenty P.M. I'm going to skip roll, go right to roll call.
Mayor Kandelaora?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Armin?
Here.
Councilor Caprio?
Here.
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Fawnin?
Here.
Councilor Rhodes?
Still here.
Okay. I'd like to open the public hearing on the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen budget.
Your first speaker is Chief Seward.
Can Chief Seward come forward?
My name's Bill Seward. I'm the Fire Chief of North Branford. I reside at thirty-two Meadowbrook Drive. Good evening, councilors. When you dial nine-one-one and request the fire department, there's a public expectation that as we, number one, respond to my problem quickly. Number two, bring enough firefighters or EMS providers to solve my problem. Three, bring enough of the right equipment to solve, prevent, or teach me to solve my problem better. And four, be nice, it's a stressful day, and I'm not having a good one. If you happen to speak to someone that's been affected by an emergency to which the North Branford Fire Department has responded, it's not easy to put a dollar amount on services provided. As a society, we often are constantly trying to quantify our services by assigning a dollar amount. The problem is, when it's your emergency and the fire department is responding to, the value of the service is suddenly increased, and dollar signs lose their meaning. In two thousand and fourteen, the North Branford Fire Department responded to one thousand eight hundred and fifteen alarms, three hundred and forty-nine of fire origin, one thousand four hundred and sixty-two EMS incidents. We responded to sixty-five mutual aid calls. More importantly, in the last eleven years, in two thousand and fourteen, we had the lowest property loss due to fire at fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. This past year, North Branford firefighters worked for more than eighty thousand hours in responding to calls, training, participating in community events, while acquired police officers supported local law enforcement. This does not include the hours put into the management and administration of each company. There are many private sector studies that have assigned an hourly rate of twenty-five dollars for volunteer time. This means the town saves more than two million dollars a year for public fire protection. Speaking of protecting the public, as you know, the services cost to taxpayers two hundred and twenty-eight dollars a year per household, or twenty-one cents per day per resident. That's less than you pay on your cable TV, telephone, internet, or coffee in a year's time. The reality is, the residents of North Branford are fortunate to have individuals who serve as volunteer firefighters and medical first responders. When an emergency arises, it is a well-trained unit of dedicated individuals that respond. Regardless of how many emergency calls there are, these individuals constantly trained to keep their skills sharp. This is truly the best demonstration of a commitment a professional volunteer firefighter gives back to their community. Attempting to simplify this great service by assigning a dollar value only leads to misunderstandings of the real value. They are professional volunteer firefighters. Our fire rescue service is only as strong as the ability of the volunteers to respond. This is a factor that sets volunteer emergency personnel apart from other organizations. Imagine that you serve for an organization, but the time they will need is unknown. Our members must wear a radio pager that will notify them of the incident. They must be ready to make split-second decisions, many meaning life or death. In two thousand and thirteen, one hundred and six firefighters died in the line of duty in the U.S. Of these, twenty-nine were career, forty-seven volunteered, and thirty were wildly firefighters. Seventy-three percent of these deaths occurred while operating at an emergency scene. No matter the time of day, while in a deep sleep, at a child's birthday party, at a holiday party, we are still expected to respond. To the unfamiliar, this gives you a glimpse of what it means to be married to a pager that is assigned to a professional North Branford firefighter. The impact of providing a volunteer service goes beyond the individual. To be an effective volunteer, the member needs to have an extremely supportive and understanding support system. Families are always impacted when they respond to a lease or an emergency call. Someone is always left to keep the family going, and this can be very difficult. Employers are impacted. And in our town, we have employers that recognize the value of releasing a volunteer from work. We have volunteers that operate their own businesses. They too recognize the impact on their own personal businesses. Great sacrifices are made by all our personnel. This has a ripple effect. When you think back at the early days of North Branford and the transitions that this town has gone through, it's difficult to believe that the very first fire protection unit was put into place June twenty-third, nineteen thirty-eight. And it was only after a commotion initiated by a citizen that prudent actions by town leaders took the initiative to start this fire protection service, which is now one of the busiest in the region. Not only as chief of the fire department, but as a taxpayer, I deeply appreciate all the work that many past and present members have put into our great organization. Finally, our community is fortunate to have a staff of one hundred and twenty-five volunteers who work together with a common goal, providing the very best fire rescue and EMS service. The most important resource available to the North Branford Fire Department is the dedicated volunteer. I truly believe the citizens we are sworn to protect deserve a properly funded and committed fire department, along with a strong force of its members. They will give extraordinary and courageous efforts to save others in the highest tradition known to the fire service today. We have to remember it's not about us, it's about the ability to protect the people we serve. I am proud to be the fire chief of a cost-effective and efficient town service. Remember towns that surround us having career fire departments operate on budgets that range between four and seven million dollars. Each one of these departments must still maintain a workforce of committed volunteers, which they also fund. So once again, I'm asking the town council to support the recommendations made by the Honorable Board of Fire Commissioners for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen's fire and EMS operating budget, and keep volunteerism alive in North Branford. Thank you and God bless our members, their families, and keep them strong through your guidance and cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, your next speaker is Andrew Campion. And there's anyone else who there's a sign-in sheet?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the town council. My name is Andrew Campion. I live at Twenty Whiting Court, Northford. And I am also a member of the North Branford Fire Commission. I am, as well as the other fire commissioners, are disheartened that the request for an additional nine-one-one telecommunication dispatch position within the Public Safety Answering Point located within the North Branford Police Department does not appear in any two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen Public Safety Agency budget. These budgets include the police, the fire, EMS, and communications. This has been an ongoing request, and in, in the last several months, there have been a number of incidents that could cause serious safety and liability issues for the town. What is the reason that the addition of a second dispatch position has been removed from the fiscal year budget two fifteen, two sixteen? The request for the second dispatcher was communicated to the Fire Community, Fire Commission, along with the town management, manager, police commissioner, and the police chief. All North Branford citizens are at risk with only one dispatcher on duty. Recently, the agents, the town agencies received a letter from a North Branford citizen who experienced delays in an immediate response from a nine-one-one call. The result of the difference between a smoke condition to a flaming fire condition in this citizen's home. Communications is the key to all emergency outcomes. Please consider reviewing this request in your budgetary workshops. This position will enhance the public safety of the citizens, as well as assure timely response from public safety agencies. The Fire Commission and the other town departments have a duty to the citizens of this community to provide the highest level of public safety. I thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any further people that want to get up and speak about the budget? Okay. I guess we'll close the public hearing. Have a motion?
I make a motion to close the public hearing at eight-thirty.
Second. Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Bucie. Roll call.
Mayor Kandelaora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armin?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Coochie?
Yes.
Councilor Rhodes?
Yes.